You're all set.
If you're okay with it. Well, I brought my script with me. Okay, well, we'll call the meeting to order. I'm Bob Leggett, and the vice chair for the Board of Zoning Appeals today. With us are Elizabeth Colmer, Tom Pinkney, and Ed Williams. And also present, we have Tyler Newman, zoning administrator for the town of Seabrook Island, who will act as secretary for this meeting. Tyler has notifications of this meeting then properly posted.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Now ask for approval of meeting minutes.
Bob, sorry to interrupt, but our first, we missed this on last month's.
Okay.
First order of business with this being a new year is we have to elect a new chair and vice chair. We, I know it seems recent, we had just done it in September, but that was because it's the first meeting of 2022 in September.
This is absent.
I just confirmed, I just confirmed that we are able to vote in members that are absent.
Okay. Did you care to make a nomination, Tom?
I made that nomination.
Okay, we, John Fox nominated the chair.
Second.
The second, all in favor. Nominate you to be vice chair. The second.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor.
I.
All right.
Okay. Do the minutes now, Tyler?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do I need to move to approve the zoning appeals meeting minutes from February 22nd, 2023? I'll slide them ahead. All in favor. Okay. Today, we have one variance requested here, it's variance number 181. Applicant Malcolm Brennan and owner Michael Martin from 2919 Deer Point Drive, tax Machin Machin window, 149140027. Okay. In the address, there was, I should have said, 2919 Deer Point Drive. So before we hear testimony from the owners, zoning administrator will provide an overview of this request. Mr. Newman, do you promise the testimony you're about to present is true and accurate to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, proceed.
Thank you very much. Before us, we have variance request number 181, subject property 2919 Deer Point Drive. The town has received a request, correction. Yeah, the town received your request from Malcolm Brennan on behalf of Michael Martin for a variance from DSO section 10.5A1, critical area setback, to allow for 444 square feet of open deck to encroach eight feet nine inches into the required 25-foot critical area setback, to allow 42 square feet of exterior stairs to encroach four foot one inch into the required 25-foot critical area setback, and finally, to allow 19 square feet of permeable paving to encroach four foot one inch into the required critical area setback. Subject property, as previously stated, 2919 Deer Point Drive. It's highlighted in blue in the image above there. Zoning district is moderate lot, single family or RSF2. The acres for this property, that's total acreage is 0.393 acres and the total square footage is 17,099 square feet. I'll keep that up as I go through those requests. In May 2022, the town zoning administrator met with the property owner, Mr. Martin, to discuss possible improvements to his property, including a proposed swimming pool. At that time, the zoning administrator advised Mr. Martin that he would need to have his property surveyed to determine the location of the SEB HECS CRN critical line in corresponding 25-foot setback. Both your own critical lines have to be updated every five years. In November 2022, the zoning administrator was contacted by Malcolm Brennan, who indicated that he was designing a pool and deck addition at 2919 Deer Point Drive and that there were encroachments associated with the proposed addition that would require or could require variances. Upon reviewing the proposed site plan, the town zoning administrator advised the applicant that he was correct in his assessment that there were setbacks and encroachments shown that would not be permitted under the DSO and that the only means of deviating from the requirements of the DSO would be to seek a variance from the Board of Zoning Appeals. I believe we've spoken about this in the past, but under the town's previous development standards ordinance, section 76050, the marsh setbacks stated, "The minimum setback for a structure exclusive of open deck decks on a lot abutting the marsh shall be 25 feet from the South Carolina Ocean and Coastal Resource Management Critical Area or the lot, whichever is more land-able. No part of an open deck shall be closer than 15 feet from critical areas." Under the town's current development standards ordinance, which was effective as of July 1st of last year, section 10.5A1, critical area setbacks states, "Except as otherwise provided in this ordinance, no structure shall be placed above or below ground within 25 feet of any critical area." The subject property is currently zoned moderate lot, single family, and the single-family residence is a permitted use by right. The subject property is 17,099 square feet in area, which is approximately 2.3% smaller than the minimum lot size in the RSF2 zoning district. Specifically, the minimum lot size in RSF2 is 17,500 square feet. So this lot is considered non-conforming in terms of size. A total of 15,547 square feet, or 90.92% of the lot, is designated as highland. Based on the site plan submitted with the variance application, the proposed new pool will comply with the 25-foot critical area setback requirement as well as the 12.5-foot side yard setback requirement for non-conforming lots. The proposed improvements do not cause the subject property to exceed the 40% maximum lot coverage requirement in the RSF2 zoning district. Additionally, based on the elevations provided with the submittal, the proposed improvements will also comply with the 36-foot maximum height requirement to allow for the construction of the proposed 444 square feet of open deck, 42 square feet of exterior there, and 19 square feet of permeable paving. The applicants are requesting variances from that they're requesting variances that we've previously discussed. So I'll run through some of the information that we have in our presentation as well. These are some site photos of the subject property. We'll reiterate, this is an existing property that we have before us. I know the last few requests that we've had are for new construction. And here are a few photos at the rear of the property of the deck area in question. Here we have a survey of the existing conditions on site. I believe that this survey was done just last year, 2022. We have their proposed site plan. I know it's hard to see on the screen up there, so I've highlighted the high points at the very front of the site. You'll see a existing dune that is called out. We'll speak about that more momentarily when we delve into the variance criteria, but the applicants do reference that throughout their narrative. And then beyond that, I've highlighted each of the proposed improvements. You'll see the new permeable walkway, new steps, and the 588 square feet of open deck. I'll go into the applicant's analysis of the actual variance criteria. In their application, the applicants are requesting relief from the critical area setback requirements for the following reasons. For various criteria A, which there are extraordinary and exceptional conditions retained for a particular piece of property, the applicant indicated the property is located in the RSF2 zoning district with a minimum lot size of 17,500 square feet. However, the total amount of high ground on the subject property is 15,547. One clarification that I do want to make with that statement there is just that minimum lot size requirements are based off of your total square footage, not just high ground. So the 15,547 is not 2,000 feet, or 2,000 square feet less than a conforming lot. This is a non-conforming lot in the sense that it's 17,099 square feet. So it is shy by 401 square feet and is non-conforming. But I just want to clarify that they're speaking to high ground when they say 15,547, which is area excluding marshes and critical areas on site. The billable area of the lot has been further restricted by the previous owner's decision to construct the home behind the existing dune at the front of the property that was the existing dune that's called out at the top there. This decision by the previous owner effectively increased the front yard setback from 30 feet to over 65 feet. Variance criteria number two, or variance criteria E, these conditions do not generally apply to other properties in the vicinity. In cases where large dunes exist on similar properties, the home is typically constructed on top of the dune, thus destroying the vegetation and ecological integrity associated with this natural feature. In contrast, the existing home located at the subject property was pushed as far back as possible, preserving the dune and natural vegetation. For various criteria C, because of these conditions, the application of the ordinance to a particular piece of property would effectively prohibit or unreasonably restrict the utilization of the property. The applicants stated to construct a new pool without the pool approaching it to the 25-foot critical area setback, the existing deck would need to be demolished. He requested variance allows the property owner to recover his existing open deck. Before submitting this variance request, the property owner offered to purchase all of, all or part, or any part of the adjacent undeveloped property that is owned by the Kiowa Habitat Conservancy. The hope of this offer was to increase the size of the subject property enough to construct a new guest house and pool without the need for any variances. Unfortunately, the Kiowa Habitat Conservancy declined this offer. The only other available land on the subject property is located at the front. Since swimming pools are not permitted in the front yard, this option would require demolishing portions of the existing home to make room at the rear of the site. This option would also require constructing an addition on the front of the house to recover the demolished square footage. Variance criteria D, the authorization of the variance will not give substantial detriment to a date of property or the public good and the character of the zoning district will not be harmed by the granting of the variance. The applicants indicated that the proposed deck will not extend closer to the OCR critical line with the existing deck on the adjacent neighbor's property. Variance criteria E, the BZA shall not grant a variance. The effect of which would be to allow the establishment of a use not otherwise permitted in a zoning district to physically extend a non-conforming use of land or to change zoning district boundaries shown on the official zoning map. The variance before us will not change the permitted use of the property. Next, the fact that the property may be utilized more profitably to the variance be granted may not be considered when granting a variance. The property owner is not requesting this variance to make the property more valuable. Rather, he is making this request so that his family can enjoy the natural environment in the same manner as many of their neighbors. And finally, the need for the variance shall not be granted or shall not be the result of the applicant's own actions. The owner of the subject property has not created this hardship. The decision to place the home so close to the 25-foot critical area setback was made by the previous property owner to preserve the existing dune at the front of the property. Also, at the time that the property was purchased, which was March 21st, 2022, the property owner was under the impression that a future open deck, like the one associated with this variance request, would have been permitted without the need for a variance. That is why I did make a point of citing section 76050 from the previous DSO, which was not adopted until July 1st, 2022. So when this property was purchased, a proposed open deck would have been allowed to encroach 10 feet into the required critical area setback. As a matter of practice, the town zoning administrator does not typically provide a recommendation in favor of or in opposition to a variance application. In our opinion, these requests are best left to the Board of Zoning Appeals following a thorough review of relevant facts, including the receipt of testimony from interested parties regarding the required public area. In granting a variance, state law permits the Board of Zoning Appeals to attach such conditions as the board may consider advisable to protect established property values in the surrounding area or to promote the public health, safety, or general welfare. Should the board vote to approve the variance request, staff would recommend in favor of attaching the following conditions to the approval. The approved variance shall apply to the building layout as shown on the site-specific plan prepared by the applicants and reviewed by the board on March 22nd, 2023. Any modification to the site-specific plan prior to the issuance of a zoning permit, with the exception of minor corrections and/or modifications which conform to the requirements of the town's DSO, shall require further review and approval by the Board of Zoning Appeals prior to permitting. The second condition being that the applicant shall prepare and submit to the zoning administrator an has-built survey prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy or within 30 days of passing the final inspection if no certificate of occupancy is required. The has-built survey shall be prepared and stamped by a professional land surveyor who is qualified to perform such services in the state of South Carolina. And the final condition being that the variance shall become null and void if the applicant or subsequent property owner fail to obtain a building permit prior to the effective date of any changes to the SEB HECS CRM each front jurisdictional line and/or each front setback line impacting the subject property. That concludes my presentation.
Any questions from board members for Tyler?
What I always add, have there been any submissions by adjacent property owners or nearby property?
No, sir. Everyone within 300 feet was notified of the variance request. We posted the legal ad in the Post and Courier and posted the property and actually didn't get any public comments at all for this one.
I'd be shocked if you've had this off the top of your head, but it says that the property is approximately 2.3% smaller than the minimum lot size in that district. Do you have any idea how many lots are smaller than the minimum lot size? Is that something that's unique, that it's?
Anecdotally speaking, there are certainly a lot of non-conforming lots on the island. You know, a lot of the new construction projects that we have come through are on lots that are considered non-conforming in size. But no, in terms of the square footage of the direct surrounding area, though, now I can tell you off the top of my head where this stands in, you know, proximity to the adjacent properties. Now, we could, you know, pull up Charleston County GIS and click on a couple of them around.
It's more out of curiosity, if that's a unique phenomenon.
Other questions? Okay. Would you like to make your presentation? We can drag that podium out if you want it, but.
I'm fine, I think.
Okay, would you state your name and address for the record then, please?
Yes, I'm Malcolm Brennan with Brennan Architects. I'm at 113 Wapu Creek Drive, 4.
And do you promise the testimony you're about to present is true and accurate to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Thank you, proceed.
Also with me today are the owners, Michael and Ann Martin. First of all, all the information that was presented is accurate. But the site plan is pretty effective in showing the reason for approving this variance. I'll get the full site plan pulled up for you.
Okay.
I'd also like to point out that while the areas of encroachment that are indicated by the zoning administrator correct, I'd also like to please note that there's 106 square feet of existing deck stairs and papers that already encroach on the OCR setback. So the total additional encroachment that we're seeking is actually less than 400 square feet. You get that calculation in my corresponding credit ID. It's the total of the encroached deck, encroached stairs, and encroached papers, less than 106. Do you want us to zoom in on anything in particular? Um, I think that's good for now. The, the front part is the most important part. I mean, it's our history. The existing dune. Yeah. As was already mentioned, just going to have it because I think it's important to reiterate it. At the time the owner purchased the property, it was just, no bearing could have been required for this. And it's coming, it was three months prior to the ordinance taking effect, so. Anyway, that kind of wanted to point that out. The primary reason leading for the need for this ordinance is because rather than building on top of the existing dune, as most other property owners have done, the existing home was located at the rear of the lot to preserve the ecology and vegetation of the existing dune. And you can see on that site plan, I let dune occupy the front half of the lot and push the front of the house back 65 feet from the front. So this is an ecologically sensitive feature that was one of the original things that attracted Michael and Ann to this property and they want to continue to be good stewards to the environment. However, this recent change to the DSO has the effect of creating an unnecessary hardship on this particular property and penalizes the property for the commendable action of preserving the existing dune rather than building one. As was also mentioned, we've explored other, every other available means of creating this additional outdoor space and a pool without any of the variance, seeking to purchase additional property. But that was not available. Furthermore, the proposed previous deck is designed so it's not to alter drainage patterns or create any negative impacts on the adjacent wetland. And I explained how that will be constructive, but basically, we're going to create an 18-inch proud bed underneath the deck. So the main water that lands on the deck will perp through it and be absorbed into the standing side as well. To be the neighbors, we enhanced landscape buffer along the east side of the property with, I believe, five palms from there. Slide that down a little bit, we'll get toward the rear. And I think this is also a good time to point out or to illustrate how we aren't encroaching, or we are further back from the wetlands than our adjacent neighbor. That's, I think, the rest of it's been stated pretty clearly. So I don't want to reengagement tape all of it. And thank you for considering our information and got any questions?
I guess I disagree with you that they were penalized. The rule didn't penalize them. I mean, I think you've got a good application, but the you want a variance, that's all there is to it, just you know, variance. I think the penalty, I don't think this, it didn't seem appropriate to me, but the variance looks good to me and so it's a it's a relatively small lot, it's a beautiful lot, you know, the next door neighbor's wife and this house. And it's a beautiful lot and the way you've described it, I don't see anything that's going to adversely affect the beauty of the surrounding areas. And we have a dune in front of our lot, too, and it's a very nice thing to have. And it's also a transeer. Okay with us.
Yes, yeah, you're right.
I have a question. When I was looking at it, the stairs now go off to the other side. You must have known where, and then had that one behind it. And it stops like short of your screen in. So when you were like trying to figure out how to configure things, did you try anything else that like might, might have reduced the encroachment? Or was there really anything else you could do?
I mean, I didn't really see another way to do it. We, we, obviously, we were trying to connect to the driveway so the guests could, you know, come visit without going through the house. I didn't see another way. We held it just tight against the existing structure as possible.
When I went and looked at, I visited it. There wasn't a high tide, so it was kind of hard to tell. But it looks like with the plantings behind the house that kind of go toward the marsh, the natural plantings, it was kind of hard to tell whether the marsh really is kind of sort of further away than the numbers might suggest, but it struck me that way.
The grass, yes.
Okay, any other questions, Lieutenant? Okay.
I get it.
And do the owner want to say anything?
Well, we just like to thank you for your time today and we just expect you to volunteer and to do this and helping us, thank you so much.
We're okay to pay?
I might find the job too. You beat me up.
I think Tyler, you said earlier that there was no public comment at all.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay, well, there being no further testimony, we will close the public hearing. Normally, before the board deliberates, we'd have the zoning administrator do the brief overview of the criteria, but we've already done that, so let's don't throw it again. So. We need to, we need to address the six variance criteria.
We need to.
We need to address the six, the ABCD, specifically. So if anybody would like to do that. So if anybody would like to do that, we should repeat. And you'll be. When I said the worst. Number, number.
In agreement with the extraordinary exceptional conditions exist on this lot. Due to the dune. The, um, these conditions don't appear to me to generally apply to others in the area. The application of the existing zoning ordinance. Would effectively prohibit or unreasonably restrict the use of this property. And the authorization, granting this variance is not going to be a substantial detriment. To any adjacent property, the public good. And the character of the district will not be harmed by the granting.
But the other.
Yeah.
I'm on the roll here.
We did not leave the developers. Created this, um, situation. And it is, this variance is not being requested for the purpose of profitability.
Thank you. Any further discussion from the board members?
The only comment I would make, man. Uh, there are so many non-conform, non-conforming things around. And I was talking to, to Tyler before I got here, I, all the projects that we did. Were on lots that the original developer didn't finish. And if, uh. You know, my attitude about most of these that is on this, if, if the owners want to spend money to. Improve their property or enjoy their property or whatever, it doesn't bother anybody else, particularly. When the DSO gets changed. So, I mean, that is something that I personally would consider. So.
I think, uh, I agree with you, Tim, I think that, that excuse is going to run out. You know, in a ma- in a short matter of time, I think it's, uh, six months to a year to get used to it. Uh, I agree with everything you said about the, um. This is an unusual lot, I think, uh, there are extraordinary circumstances because they're trying to preserve the dune. Um, dunes are a thing of beauty on Seabrook Island, um. I think all of them that we can preserve, we should, uh.
They keep golfers out of my backyard, I love it.
Okay, I have a. A motion to approve and included in that motion, motion would be adding, um, the staff's recommendations for the. Um, additional points that Tyler went over.
But conditions, yes.
Conditions, thank you.
I move to approve the variance with the conditions as stated by the town administrator.
So.
Thank you, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Uh, passes by a vote of four to zero. Um, so, um, you can adjourn the meeting.
Sounds like a winner.
Yeah, maybe you're enjoying, thank you.
Thank you.